Aye.
Reich.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Nay.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Quincy? Nay?
No.
Forsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That amendment passes. Then, on the main motion, any further discussion? Any care to speak? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the main motion on item 23 as amended.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are 12 ayes and one nay.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Election and Rules Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item on the agenda, which was to change up our council rules. I move that item.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election and Rules Committee report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Council President. We are bringing forward nine items for consideration today. I'll be moving all the items forward. The first is approving council appointments to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. There's some for, council appointments are for two-year terms, beginning January 1st and ending December 31st, of Dylan Brendan Kestie, Jenna Grove, Thomas Olson, Andrew Murray, Michelle Stockness, John Stenseth, Isaac Russell Hart, and Erin Niehoff. Also approving mayoral appointments for the same term of Alan Campbell, Lisa Daniels, Daryl Gruber, Mohamed Yakub, James Nash, Jennifer Cruz, and Ricardo McCurley. Second item is directing the city coordinator staff to report back to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee in March 2017 on strategies developed by other jurisdictions to make green zone improvements without experiencing gentrification or displacement of low-income people, communities of color, and indigenous people due to increased property values. Third item is approving our 2017 to 2019 American with Disabilities Act action plan. Fourth item is directions to our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department related to our diversity survey reports, asking the department to work with the clerk's office and the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission, and our various advisory boards and commissions who were surveyed as part of the study to develop recommendations for setting aside seats on these boards and commissions for persons under age 25. And the other staff direction related to this is directing staff to work with the Community Engagement Commission to recommend ways to dedicate at least a portion of future One Minneapolis funding to fund organizations that work with and support neighborhood organizations to increase the number of potential organization board members who are renters and people of color. Fifth item is acceptance of gifts from Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy that will allow us to do a community engagement energy efficiency pilot project as part of our Clean Energy Partnership. The sixth item is authorizing an agreement with PACE Analytical Services in the amount not to exceed $120,000 to provide environmental lead testing services for the city. Seventh item is accepting a grant for the School-Based Health Alliance, not to exceed $4,200. This is to continue participation in the School Health Service National Quality Initiative Collaborative. The eighth item is authorizing a contract with Volunteers for America, Volunteers of America, in the amount not to exceed $241,500. And this is to provide health worker services in some of our public housing high-rise buildings. And the ninth and final item is authorizing execution of our second community solar subscription agreement with Sun Edison, and also directing staff to report back about a third community solar RFP. This one will focus on availability for Minneapolis residents and also how we can allow low- and moderate-income customers to also participate. I believe there is at least someone who won't make a comment on item number two, but I would move all items forward.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. All items. Did you wish to speak to item two, Councilmember Gordon?
Pardon me?
Did you wish to speak to item two?
No, I know that Councilmember Connell did.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak on this issue because it's something that my ward residents really care about and a concept that we've been working on since I was elected. I first just want to acknowledge all of the hard work that has gone into this project from our city staff, our Sustainability Department, and the various community members who bring so much expertise to this conversation. Through this work, the City of Minneapolis has been able to develop and publish a Green Zones Calculator, which is on the City of Minneapolis website. And I encourage everyone to take a peek at it when they can so you can see what the work is looking like now. For this particular item, I just want to flag for our colleagues here and for our community members who might be watching or listening, as well as to our city staff, is that there's a variety of data points that have been collected to construct a Green Zones sort of region to try to zero in on what this might look like in our city. And I believe there's been more than 20 data points gathered. And the challenge here is really figuring out which data points we're going to weigh, to have a sort of a weighted average of being able to implement and identify this region in the city. Because having so many different data points and having all of them carry the same amount of significance to identify a Green Zones in our city is going to be a challenge, and it might even be counterproductive to the whole notion of establishing a Green Zones. So I just want to put that on the table for my colleagues to consider. And I will certainly be working with our staff to try to clarify that a little bit better. I know that some of the members of the work group have already identified as an area that needs to be further discussed and clarified. Because at the end of the day, what we don't want to do is pass a watered-down version of a Green Zones policy, which is pretty dynamic, pretty unique in the nation. And I think we really have to do the hard work of ensuring that this has the intended outcome to really support the most diverse, the most low-income, and the most polluted areas of our city, which I think some of us already sort of know where those areas will be. But really, supporting that designation with the right structured data will be really important. So with that, I just want to thank Councilmember Gordon for chairing the committee that has led this work. And I look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues and the staff and the community on this effort.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the report.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by Council Vice President Liden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have four items on the agenda today, two quite significant. The first is technical amendment ordinance to our playing language charter. I will note for this that to approve would require a vote of all 13 council members. Item number two is adoption of our 2017 legislative agenda. This is the shorter list of agenda items that city staff will be working on at the state capitol. Items three and four are contracts for state legislative services from contract firms. And I will move approval of all four items.
Councilmember Liden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. The first item is Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights Appointments. Second item is the Police Conduct Oversight Commission Appointments. Third item is the Police Conduct Review Panel Appointments. The fourth item is the Contract with Cornerhouse Inter-Agency Child Abuse Evaluation Training Center for Forensic Evaluation Services. The fifth item is an application to the Department of Public Safety's Office of Justice Programs for Sex Trafficking and Training Grant. And the sixth item is camera equipment acceptance for the Third Precinct from Ventura Village Neighborhood Organization for Cameras, I believe. And with that, I will move all six items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 20 items today for consideration. Item one is the Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission Appointments. Those names are listed. Items two, three, four, five, and seven are all actions to move forward with reconstruction projects of the roads listed. Item five, or six, rather, is Samata Crossing. They had approval and easements for that project area. Item eight is the 2017 Minneapolis Open Streets, approving the list of routes for 2017 Minneapolis Open Streets. And we had a really good report in committee about how our partnership is moving forward with those very celebrated activities in our city. The following items refer to reports to the Ways and Means Committee. Item nine is the 2017 Downtown Minneapolis Transportation Management Organization Grant Agreements. Item 10 is the grant from the Minnesota Historical Society for Conservation of Sculpture Clock on Niklet Mall. Item 11 is the, item 11, 12, and 13 are all adjustments to contracts that are in place for projects that have already been approved. Item 14 is the agreement with Coen Partners for PD Plaza Historic Landscape Preservation and Architectural Services. Item 15 is agreement with Minnesota Vikings LLC, evaluation of feasibility of contraflow crossover between Third Street South and Fourth Street South. Item 16 is the Eighth Street Reconstruction and Street Lighting Projects. And it's a postponement of levy assessments for 2018, and that's for better correspondence with our partners at the University of Minnesota. The actions that I'll be moving forward that are listed are one and two. Finance has asked to strike three and four. Even though there might be some timing issues with the physical project, the financing component can move forward, and that's what they were requesting. So my motion will have one and two and have stricken or delete 16.3 and 16.4 from the agenda to allow for the sale of assessment bonds for the project cost. Item 17 is the Seward Bicycle Boulevard's Layout Approval, Grant Acceptance, and Cooperative Agreement with Hennepin County. Approving those actions that are listed. And items 18, 19, and 20 are all accepting low bids for activities, standard activities of the committee. With that, Madam President, I move all items as adjusted with 16.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report in its entirety on item 16, striking items three and four. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to remove item seven for discussion. That one came forward without recommendation from the committee.
Okay, we'll pull off item seven. Councilmember Connell.
I'm sorry, I want to get in the queue to speak on that item that Councilmember Bender just moved.
Okay. All right, let's do what we did in Community Development Regulatory Services then, and move, excuse me, vote on the all items with the exception of item seven. Is that okay with people, Councilmember Bender? You okay?
Yep, I was just getting.
Okay, all items on the Transportation and Public Works Report, noting that on item, I lost my page here. Item 16, we have stricken three and four, and we're leaving item seven out. We'll vote on that separately. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Forsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
No on 15, aye on the remainder.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes, except item 15. There are 12 ayes and one nay.
Those items are adopted. On item seven, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a long discussion about item seven at the TPW Committee. And so I just wanted to kind of go through maybe a little bit more technical detail than we would normally have at council. But I think it's important that we understand what's in front of us. As the county presented their layout for Glenwood Avenue, Councilmembers Gordon and I asked a lot of questions about why the layout didn't include the kind of curb-separated protected bike lane that we find on Washington Avenue that's being constructed now. And essentially, county staff said that they couldn't do that because of the rules that they follow in their engineering standards. The rule that she was referencing is actually the state aid standards, which are in state law. And because this is classified as an arterial road under the state aid standards, she was saying that a roadway like this, an arterial road, would require an 11-foot travel lane with a four-foot-wide reaction distance on the curb, and that that required reaction distance precludes putting a curb that would separate the bikes and pedestrians from cars on this road. So the state aid standards are actually so out of sync, even with MINDOT's own highway standards, that the legislature passed a law directing them to update their standards by this August. And they're over past that deadline. I understand that those updated state aid standards will be available in a couple of months. That was against, per the state legislatures, actually, a couple of sessions ago, supposed to be completed by this past August. But my understanding is things like this, which are, again, so outdated that their own trunk highway rules don't include them anymore, will soon be gone from state law, which I think is a good thing for cities. But even with this particular law on the books still and the county still using these outdated standards, there is a variance process from the state aid standards. And all of the variances that had come forward in 2014 and 15 were approved by MINDOT. So there is a process to design this road in a way that would be more safe for all users. The troubling thing about designing a road with such a big reaction distance and such wide overall width for cars is that speed really matters in terms of the safety of a road for all users. If you design a road for cars to go 40 miles an hour, you're putting people in danger. Because if someone is hit at that speed, they have an 80% chance of dying. And even if you reduce the design's speed to 30 miles an hour, that's inverse. You only have a 40% chance of dying if you're hit at 30 miles an hour. And this is a road that is expected to have a lot of pedestrians on it. And so I think that it's very difficult for me to support a road that is coming forward with an unsafe design. This will have a sidewalk, a wider sidewalk. It will have a bike lane that will have some of those white sticks in the warm weather months, but not in the wintertime. And again, with a slight change to the road, we could have a much safer facility that we know gets people out of their cars and into bike lanes, that we know would work for all users. There would still be plenty of space for cars to drive. There would be no impact on the number of lanes, simply on the width of those lanes. And so I can't support this design for those reasons. So as I did at committee, I'll be voting against this today.
Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've been doing a lot of listening from the area residents who have been raising concerns about this particular issue. And I just want to share, you know, a personal story of how I connect to this conversation and why I've been listening to the residents. In 2013, when I was running for office, there was a small boy, 10-year-old boy, who was hit on 26th Street, and ended up, he ended up dying. And as many of you know, 26th and 28th are some of the streets that we have been working very hard to make safer for pedestrians and for people who bike as a mode of transportation. So when people reach out to me with issues like this, I really engage and listen and want to work with them to find a solution. So for me, after hearing that the current design is actually not as safe as it could be, and I think that's the challenge here, is that it can be safer. This is something we can do today. This is something under our control. This is something that we can impact. This is something that we can influence and make a difference in. It just makes me a little sad to know that, you know, this would be moving in the wrong direction. So, you know, I know that the safer design would not cost more than the current proposal, which is huge. Again, this is something that we can shape, we can make better. And that's not going to pull money from any other direction or negatively influence any other project that might be on the table. So when that happened in 2013, when that 10-year-old boy died because he was hit in one of these streets where it's very unsafe for people to bike and walk, bringing down car speeds from 40 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour could have made the difference in saving this little boy's life. So I don't take this vote lightly. I think there's a lot on the table. And the fact that this item is coming to us without a recommendation is huge. That means that we should be doing more conversations. That means we should be working harder with the county to find a solution that our community of residents, that our voters, that our taxpayers can support. And I think that's the type of leadership that we should be bringing to the table to ensure that we're listening to the area residents, that we're working with them, and that we're crafting the solutions that are going to bring everyone together. So I will be voting no on this item today.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm speaking today to urge my colleagues to support the staff recommendation for the layout of Glenwood Avenue. For background, Glenwood Avenue is a county road, and this is a county project. And this redesign and rebuild is from the county and is asking for us for municipal consent. It was brought before the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committees in April and was approved by both. The Bicycle Advisory Committee asked for a complete buffered bike lane and better connections to the Cedar Lake Trail that approved the layout otherwise. This layout was first supposed to be presented to us at the beginning of November at TPW and then to the council. Both myself and Councilmember Goodman supported the layout as it was presented then. Shortly before it was to be presented to TPW, some members of the Bicycle Advocacy Committee raised concerns about the design of the roadway and their desire for protected bike lanes. Layout approval was pulled from the November 7th agenda, and Hennepin County agreed to a meeting with city staff, including staff from my office, Councilmember Goodman's office, along with advocates. And I can tell you, I mean, there were probably about, I want to say, 12 to 15 staffers from both the city and the county there for that meeting. The meeting was held, and other options for the layout were discussed. Given a number of technical and operational challenges, Hennepin County did not recommend an off-street protected bike lane. I was okay with this in the first place, and I'm okay with it now. Glenwood Avenue is an important corridor for truck traffic. Both commercial trucks going to and from the farmer's market in downtown and commercial trucks leaving the large industrial area to the west of this section travel through here regularly. That needs to be accommodated. This layout fulfills the city policy of complete streets. The buffered bike lane is a good amenity that will allow bikers from the west to approach downtown more safely than they do now. The real gem of this layout, though, is a commitment to the pedestrian realm. Aside from the fact that, like bikers, pedestrians are people too, pedestrians are doubly important in this area. First is the proximity to the farmer's market and the planned BRT transit. Transit users usually turn into pedestrians when they get off of transit. And as we increase connections to the farmer's market, we need to ensure that foot traffic is promoted and safe. Between new plantings and a wider pedestrian realm, this proposal does a good job of that. Second is the number of homeless in this area. This layout is at the intersection of several large homeless shelters in an area of lots of supportive services for our homeless population. Promoting the pedestrian realm in this corridor is promoting a safe space for people who would usually keep on the margins of society. I have to admit, I feel like the county and the city did some extra outreach and engagements on this project. And that seems to not be acknowledged here today. But, you know, I was a bit surprised when my colleagues took an extra interest in this. And, you know, I understand that, you know, bike lanes can be the measure of success in Minneapolis. But success in North Minneapolis might be a little bit different and nuanced. And, you know, I would say, you know, if my colleagues have more time or more free time to devote to north side issues, I'd like to draw their attention to the regional drug market operating for the west down Glenwood. Figuring out solutions to make sure that residents from the rest of Minneapolis and the region don't come to North Minneapolis to buy heroin would be welcomed by the residents of Ward 5 in my office in the police department. And it would at least be a good use of energy, it would be as good a use of energy as picking a fight with the county about road design in this case. I urge my colleagues to support the layout as provided by the county.
Councilmember Liden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. At our Transportation and Public Works Committee meeting, I would say that I had done my normal homework in preparing for that meeting. And this was not a topic that had really generated much public commentary. And as Councilmember Yang had noted, both the pedestrian and the bicycle advisory committees had reviewed the project and had actions approving the layout. And I voted at that meeting to support the layout. I'm doing something that I think I've only done very few times when I've been on the council, but I am going to have a different vote today on this. And I'm not going to support the layout. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but there have been some incidents that have happened recently around the city that are making me believe that we need to be even firmer on how we challenge what I think are assumptions about what we can and should do and how safe our streets should be for pedestrians and for bicyclists. I know not everybody agrees with whether we build additional bicycle infrastructure. And sometimes that continues to be a conversation. But to me, I will say, the bigger issue ends up being whether we are doing things that impact the rate of speed at which vehicles travel, and thus then how safe our streets are for everyone who needs to use them. So with that, I am not going to support the layout coming forward today.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly say that both the PAC and the BAC passed updated resolutions at their last meetings. The Bicycle Advisory Committee was specific that they supported protected bike lanes wherever feasible, including a total roadway width wherever feasible, including a total roadway width that had a two-curb reaction distance, which would allow for the protected curb-separated kind that's on Washington. And then the pedestrian advisory committee acknowledged that since their resolution that previous April, that we understand the North Minneapolis Bicycle Advisory Council has advocated for protected bike lanes in lieu of the city's proposed on-street bike lanes. The PAC is not opposed to this in concept, but they didn't have a specific design, so they did not take a specific position. But I just wanted to note that both of those advisory bodies did discuss this with more information at their past meetings, not having had the alternative from the county to consider. They didn't, they didn't vote on a specific layout.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report, item seven? Seeing none, sounds like we have a divided vote, so let's have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
One second. So, no.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and four nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 23 items for your consideration today. The first five items are from the city attorney's office. They represent various legal settlements. We also have three contracts coming from the city attorney's office, a selection of bond counsel, as well as from the clerk's office. We have two items in preparation and in acknowledgement of our Sesquicentennial. We also have a grant acceptance from the funders' network for smart growth in livable communities, contract with the Improve Group for services related to the Recast Minneapolis Grant, an agreement with Public Art Consulting for Weber Park Library. We have a contract amendment with Peterson Companies for a contract closeout at projects related to the convention center, as well as the insurance premium for the convention center. We have a contract with Perkins &amp; Will for the pre-design and program development services for the new downtown office building project. We have a general fund contingency budget usage resolution as item number 18. Item number 19 are resolutions related to the target market ordinance and the permanent review committee. Item number 20 is the official IRS intent declaration to issue tax-exempt bonds. Item number 21 is the City of Minneapolis Accounts Receivable Policy. We also have a gift acceptance for conference travel, as well as a revenue agreement with the Downtown Improvement District for the 2016 Holadazzle Police Officer Assistance. Happy to move all 23 items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Committee report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, I'm just going to mention on item 13 that it looks like we've spent about $245,000 of the $1 million grant for the Recast Program already. So, I don't know. We've had a full explanation of what we're going to do with that grant, but anyway, we've spent $245,000 on it. So clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is denying an appeal for a certificate of appropriateness and allowing for the demolition of a building at 2019 Eastlake Street. Item number two is approving an application for a rezoning at 12 through 18 West 15th Street to allow for 75-unit residential development. And item number three is approving an application for a street vacation of 30th Avenue South for metro transit. I will move items one through three. I just wanted to make a brief comment on item number one.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report and wishes to comment on item one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And I believe Councilmember Conno also wants to speak on this item, but I just wanted to briefly say, this is the Burmashave Building that we had quite a long presentation about at the Zoning and Planning Committee. This is a historic resource designated, but staff found that it was in too bad of condition to block the demolition of the building. And so we had quite a long presentation, and the folks have done a lot of research about the history of this building. It's certainly a very interesting history, but again, it was the condition of the building that led us to deny that appeal.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to speak to this issue because I've had a resident come and meet with me and email me about the Burmashave Building, and this is in the 9th Ward. And the Burmashave Building is a part of the development plans that Minneapolis Public Schools has for moving the adult basic education services from the corner where the Hennepin County will establish their new south side hub and then will be shifting to the northern side of South High. And so I've been working on this project for three years, and I've recently heard from Mr. Steve Sandberg, who is a dear resident of ours, and I just want to acknowledge that he single-handedly did so much research on the historic significance of this building, and he, you know, submitted the paperwork to essentially get the city to look at this issue. He understands the city has reviewed this process, as Councilmember Bender has mentioned, and he understands that the proposal will be moving forward for demolition. But he does want us to make sure that we can play a part in ensuring that Minneapolis Public Schools can hire an organization called Better Futures to do the demolition. And this organization helps to meet our city's goals to be a zero-waste city and provides job training opportunities for people who wouldn't traditionally have access to jobs to essentially repurpose the building materials and deconstruct and demolish, help to help with the demolition of the building. So I just want to say that I'm working on that, and I understand how important this building might be for some people in my neighborhood, but, you know, this project has been moving for a long time, and after going through the proper city process, has been found to be, you know, something that we can demolish and that we can perhaps, you know, make better for the area as Eastlake Street right now is challenged with a lot of issues of crime and safety and development. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I thank Mr. Steve Sandberg for bringing this forward to my attention and for working with us on this, and I will be voting for this item today.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the introduction and referral calendar. First is pursuant to notice, I give notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to noise for first reading and referral to Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee amending regulations related to noisy and unruly assemblies. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have pursuant by notice, pursuant to notice, excuse me, Councilmember Palmasano introduces the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration for first reading and referral to the committee of the whole, adding a new chapter 41 relating to information governance. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the resolution that was presented at the beginning of the meeting, or prior to the meeting, I guess, opposition to a national registry resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under new business, we have a proposed charter amendment, which is receiving and filing the transmittal letter from the Charter Commission relating to a proposed charter amendment for the use of premiums received in a bond sale. Any discussion on that item? Councilmember Glidden moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code, and we need unanimous consent for that, directing the city clerk to publish notice of the public hearing to be conducted by committee of the whole at its regular meeting of January 11, 2017. Any discussion on that ordinance? Unanimous consent is required. All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Frye gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations, amending provisions related to organizational eligibility for gambling licensure. That notice is given. Councilmember Goodman and Frye give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks, downtown Business Improvement District amending petitioning requirements to match state statute. That notice is given. On item four, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. For item number four, it's a legal matter with Northern Metals LLC, and it's, I'd like to move this item for approval. It's authorizing the city attorney's office to participate in settlement negotiations on two pending matters involving the MPCA and Northern Metals LLC, and to seek to have the city joined as a party in one or both matters if necessary to protect the city's interests and facilitate settlement terms.
Councilmember Yang has moved item four, legal matter of Northern Metals LLC. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Announcements are next. Any announcements? Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just had a quick announcement. I know we're about to adjourn for the balance of the year and the holidays, but I wanted to always take this opportunity, as I do each year, to remind my colleagues that there is the march and silent vigil, excuse me, for the 32nd Homeless Memorial March in Service that will be on December 15, on Thursday. That is the, it begins at 5:00 PM at the Hennepin County Government Center, and the march proceeds down 5th Street towards Nicollet Avenue, down to 28th Street, and begins a 6:30 service of remembrance at Simpson United Methodist Church, followed by a community meal at 7:30. So I think I've been to about at least 15 of those. I encourage my colleagues to always keep the homeless or formerly homeless who have died in their hearts and prayers as they proceed through the holiday season and the end of the year. Thank you.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly give a shout out to the North High Polers football team for winning a state championship this year, and this was the first time in about 38 years that the City of Minneapolis Public School, High School, had won, and so want to give a shout out to the Polers.
The Polers. Are they going to come down and visit us at some point, Councilmember Yang? We probably couldn't put it together now.
Yeah, they will. Probably the first or second cycle next year.
Great, great. Any further announcements? If not, this is our last council meeting of the year, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for the great work that the city council did this year. Lots of inventive and helpful things, I think, for our citizens. We had a budget process that was a very respectful budget process, and I think probably one of the most peaceful ones that I've been through. So thanks to all, and thanks to our great staff that works to assist our citizens of our city, and I wish all of our citizens, be they residents or visitors or workers in our city, a very safe and peaceful holiday season. Thank you all very much, and a motion to adjourn is in order. Moving to second, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.